All right, it's ten o'clock, so I'm gonna call this meeting over.
Paul Story.
Yeah.
Same exact.
Here.
Here.
Item number three, if you recognize our guest, once again, we'd like to thank everyone for being there, this is Placemore County. Time is forward, big new business, so Sandra, you wanna lead off on that? Do you have anything?
Uh, I do have December eleventh, it's on a Monday at one o'clock, Healthcare will be here to talk to him. That's a help choice for me, and uh, that's the earliest they can come, he's been really good. And I do have the meeting room.
Do you have that green book in the top shelf?
Uh, for that. Uh, Atflack will be here tomorrow at bond two at six thirty and at three. And then be here at the courthouse tomorrow. Karen, did he ever call you this morning? What time of the day he went in the afternoon? Then he's going to Clark's Farm on Wednesday morning.
When's he gonna be here?
He comes to, he'll come to here or something.
A lot of times, even if it's multiple things, but a lot of times it's all run around the county. You can't send your guys by here, but.
Yeah, if you know.
Did they call you?
I have no call.
And get a call back?
Yeah, I have a call. Cause I'd like to have the main folks that wanna be there.
Let me uh, let me get a hook him after the meeting and then I'll.
Yeah.
At one o'clock. December eleventh at one o'clock. That's all I have.
Tim.
Couple things, we got fifty-four inmates this morning. Um, inmate numbers are going down. Um, food bill is off the seas, running approximately fifteen hundred a month. Um, we're still requesting eighteen hundred on the, on the blanket POs, but it's around about fifteen hundred dollars a week, sorry. Um, fuel for the sheriff's office side is up, it's gonna continue to go up, our call volume is high. Um, ran a report the other day, the sheriff's office has taken almost six hundred more reports this year than what's been taken over the last three or four years average. Um, and we've, we've wound up collecting, well, let me rephrase it, we've wound up serving one point six million dollar more in warrants than what was done last year. We have not seen an increase in revenue on our side. I've actually talked to the court clerk to see if they could break down how the sheriff's service fee is, but that program they have cannot do that. So, this week alone, we um, along with Victory Worship Center in Keowa, we fed the Keowa football boys, the sheriff's office did. Fed them hamburgers and hot dogs Thursday night. This weekend, if you guys haven't followed, we've had a busy weekend, we've had three major crashes. One involving a fatality and one involving two people peeing that burned the vehicle down. Um, so, guys have been busy along with calls, call volume this weekend was up again. We are actually in the process of doing a central dispatch with the city of Stigler. What will happen is we will have our, our dispatchers will become solely tower operators, which is what we need for state guidelines. So our dispatchers will operate the tower and will serve as an extra jailer, instead of a jailer dispatcher and tower operator. And then what we will do is Stigler PD will be the dispatching entity for the county. Stigler averages six to eight inmates a month, we're gonna hold their inmates from them while they do our dispatching. We'll be solely a jail, there'll be a dispatcher, we're gonna try that for six months and see if it helps the county and see if it helps the city, um, do some stuff. Everything behind the badge showed up last week, Josh Turley, um, he's supposed to have me something back by tomorrow on policy and procedures for the jail. Um, very smart guy, says that he thinks the total cost will be two thousand dollars or less for a policy. And then what he, that will be the policy for the whole jail, and then what he has said that he would do is come on as a part-time employee. We don't pay him unless we use him, the rate would be ten dollars an hour, but if there was something that needed to be adjusted or done, you would call him. He would make those adjustments, send them in, he'd make ten dollars an hour while he did it. He said he's not in it for the money, he's in it to make county jails efficient. He's actually their risk manager for Tulsa County Sheriff's Office, that's his full-time job. A water heater, water heater will be ordered this week after we get the allotments, I think they'll be signed today and then. Signed last week, so they should drop this week, dropped into last week. Soon as that's, soon as that's done, we're gonna purchase the hot water tank out of the um, SJEF, which is the Sheriff's Jail fees. And that is um, through DOC inmates. The, the purchase of this is a little different, we're gonna have to get with Karen and then to figure out how we get it done, but we will get that purchase this week and get it here, and then I'll get with Rick and Randy and um, get it installed. Other than that, that's all we got going on, and I appreciate it. Fifty-eight hundred, I believe, right Randy, fifty-eight or fifty-nine?
Well, thank you, Tim. Does anybody else have any new business or anything they'd like to bring out?
Oh, one other thing, November twenty-first, next Tuesday, we're serving lunch for all Haskell County employees here. We'll discuss that at the one o'clock meeting too, but for those that, all employees, um, we're gonna, I'm gonna smoke meat and then everybody can bring inside. We're gonna have lunch here as Thanksgiving dinner, County employees.
That's a good idea.
When will that begin?
Twenty-first, next Tuesday.
He'll be here that day.
You just come right on in.
Come on down. We're gonna move on to item number five, and that's approved for missing proceedings from previous meeting, and I'm gonna make a motion we approve that.
Paul Story.
Yes.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
Parton Berry.
Yes.
Item number six will be approved, blanket POs. And we have one for eighteen hundred dollars from the jail for Performance Foods. We have one from the jail for two hundred dollars to Fleet Corps. We have one for fifteen hundred dollars to Rocket Stone. And then we have a thousand dollars to Fleet Corps. And help dogs will be the blanket POs for this week.
Commissioner, can I explain those two real quick?
Yes, sir.
Two, um, there's a two hundred dollar one to Fleet Corps and there's a thousand dollar one to Fleet Corps. What I have done after um, the last several meetings that we've had, is we have divided up the fuel. Um, the jail actually has its own account now for fuel, and the sheriff's office has its own account. In the past, the sheriff's office is always just, but for tracking records and, and to show the actual cost of what it costs to run that facility, we have divided that into two accounts, the jail has its own fuel side, and the sheriff's office has its own fuel side. So that's why there's two blanket POs for fuel.
So you got two different companies?
Same company.
You displayed them.
It's different.
And who are y'all with?
It's, it's Fleet Corps, there's two, there's Combat or Fleet Corps. Um, and we are with Fleet Corps, it's just like a credit card system, that's all it is.
I'll make my first review, blanket POs.
I second it.
Parton Berry.
Yes.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
Paul Story.
Yes. And we've talked about it, so we're gonna move down, I believe it's item number eleven, so Debbie can move on. And item number eleven, discussed, consider signing resolution to recommend the ODOT to select a consulting engineer BKL for project for District Three, and that's just the bridge that's located a little bit west of Whitefield and back to the north.
Oh, is it circle number forty-three?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the program, I mean, the resolution, we've done the interview.
Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead, that's all for that. I'm on item number eleven.
Eleven, discussed, okay, yeah, that's best. Have you got it, Karen? Okay, you got it in your hand right now. Go ahead and sign, you want to meet one, that way we don't have to make copies of that.
And this is just the.
It's where we selected BKL, the engineer.
It says BKL's doing engineering on that bridge.
Yeah, it's on the serp plan this year. To start the engineering.
Karen, I'm gonna make a motion on item number eleven.
Paul Story.
Yes.
Parton Berry.
Yes.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
Item number twelve will be discussed, consider signing a programming resolution for job in Ho-oh Four, unnamed creek. Bridge replacement for District Three.
Now, this is just a programming resolution, we should've done this in the beginning, you know, to get on the plan, this is just a follow-up. It's just a requirement that Gary has to have it, okay, on file, this is where we programmed it. Concerning the same bridge.
I thought it was the same one. I'm gonna make that motion, Karen, on item number twelve.
Paul Story.
Yes.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
Moving on, item number thirteen will be discussed, consider signing a program resolution. JP number two BD, unnamed creek, bridge replacement for District Three.
This is a long way out, twenty-twenty-three, this is just to get it programmed, it's not a selection of anyone. Won't start for a long time, twenty-twenty-three.
We gotta keep them growing, people on the list.
Now, you're, you're, you've got forty-five going right now with BKL, so you need to look at some adding another one to it in the future.
I've got, I'm working on one, I've got the engineers coming Thursday, so I'm gonna lock them, and they're gonna come back after the meeting.
Yeah, okay. Um, also, I've got a file here with some projects that was buried out in the future in District One and Two. That we're gonna have to look at possibly, maybe even cut them down because they're so many, so big. It's Carter'sville Road, I think it's Carter'sville. All right, hang on. And Airport Road.
Is that on the project of Garland and Tomahawk Road?
No.
No, this is a completely different one, this is one that the serp plan didn't have room for. So we need to get with you and see what you wanna do about it, you know. It's got two bridges on it, I mean, it's, it's a, golly, it's got four bridges on it.
I'm gonna make a motion on thirteen.
Might need to have to do a bridge at a time, or a couple bridges at a time, or something like that, you know, do it in phases, just doing it all at once, it is fast.
Can we get with you on Thursday?
Yeah, that'll be good, yeah, that'll be good.
Paul Story.
Yes.
Parton Berry.
Yes.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
Well, Debbie, we thank you for all you do.
All right, y'all are more than welcome, I like Haskell County.
You're the main wheels up there.
I don't know about that.
And everything goes through you.
Well, everything goes through Vera too, all the money. Now, um, we work as a team.
Money at the job doesn't get started.
Very true.
All right, well, with that being done, we're.
Make sure they get them all signed, Karen, I'll get out here and go to your office, that's where the stamp is, they neither do you got. And we got two of everything, one for me and one for you, right? Hopefully they won't take none of our money.
Well.
Hostility.
I know, I have to finish for funny, I asked them when the, when the bleeding was gonna stop.
Yeah. Yeah. They need to, cause they're paid, it's what they need to do, you know, everybody take the payback.
On camera.
Yeah, yeah, on camera.
You're on camera.
Oh.
Just stand right there, all right. You're telling the truth, Debbie.
Talking politics, gotta go.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Oh, no.
Okay, moving on, moving back up to item number seven, it'll be the Board of County Commissioners to exit out of open session and enter to executive session to discuss the following, which will be the Jared Barrios versus Haskell County, I think everybody knows about that. Discuss, uh, discuss that, so at this time, I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session.
Probably, we're gonna include, cause it's a little beyond.
The people that's gonna be in here?
Yeah, cause normally executive session be you three and me, but.
Well, it's gonna be the three commissioners, you, Rick Boppers, and our sheriff. And that, those will be, cause they're on the board, and that's those, everybody, you know, that's who will have executive session here. And of course, the attorney for Masco. Item number eight, Board of County Commissioners to exit out of executive session. Clark made a motion.
I second it.
And I second it.
Parton Berry.
Yes.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, item number nine, discussed, consider signing right away invoice in the amount of nine thousand three hundred and eight dollars and three cents to universal field service for Tomahawk and Garland Road.
This is just to be approved so that we can get the, get them paid.
Yeah, I think when that, that right there comes up, I bet pressure does too. Can't help it. Next time it's cheap.
I'll wait.
Okay, Sandra, leave it. Anybody who need a motion on item number nine?
I'll make a motion on nine.
I'll second it.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
You seconded it, Paul?
I did. Okay, going on to item number ten, Ms. Russell, with all issue extension office, meet the Board of County Commissioners to introduce herself and give an update on extension office. You have the floor, ma'am.
All right, I am Danette Russell, and I just wanted to kinda update everyone on what's going on with us at this time. Of course, you all know what we do, and I am the family and consumer sciences and 4H educator, I'm half-time in this county. And we develop science-based educational programs to help Oklahomans solve local issues, promote leadership, and manage resources wisely. Um, at this time, our ag 4H position is vacant, but we're hoping to fill it in the near future. But we're continuing to provide, try our best to provide basic needs at this time for the ag position. Hopefully, we will get an ag educator in there real soon, we really need that. Um, also, we have nutrition education assistant Donna Case, who is three-quarter time. And she does work with adults and school children to provide nutrition education and try to improve the health of everyone, because that needs to be done. And, and, but this position costs the county nothing, they, y'all do provide her with office space, but you do not provide any funds toward that program. Um, in the spring, I'll be partnering with the Cowboy and also businesses to provide a program that's been brought in the, in the past called Welcome to the Real World, we bring in all the high school students to a central location and they come in, they give, they get a scenario where they've been given a job, what education they have, and how much income they'll have, and then they see how well they can live on that. It, it's very eye-opening to them, that's one of our upcoming programs that I will be doing. Also, uh, tonight, we've got just a little interest session out at the community center of the Choctaw Community Center. I do try to partner with other agencies here in the county, and I've formed a relationship with them, they're gonna let us use that facility for, at no cost with um, the barn quilt painting class, that's just uh, something that people are interested in doing, it's kind of a new um, a new interest that's sweeping the country, where people have barn, these things painted on their barns and then there's little tours. It, it kinda helps economic development of the county in a roundabout way. So, um, there's just some brief things that we're doing, like I said, we're just trying to hold ourselves uh, above water until we get fully staffed again, and we do thank you so much for your support in um, helping us keep going with our county office. Do y'all have, I have a couple of brochures here too, and do y'all have any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for all you do, and I have a question, do you know how the results come out on election on the big check out?
Uh, that will be, let's see, I checked on that, and they said it will be, the results uh, known probably by the end of this week. I don't know why it's taking so long, it's run, run a little bit different than a regular public election.
Well, was every, did everybody across the state Oklahoma vote on that the same day?
In every county and the extension office, but there was, some people did send in ahead of time a paper ballot.
But I meant that day was the day that everybody voted in Oklahoma, I just wondered, I didn't hear how it turned out, so I was just checking.
Yeah, they haven't uh, given the results yet, and I know only twenty-seven went into the uh, office there in LaFlore County. I also am sharing with LaFlore County, and so they only had twenty-seven people come in, I didn't get to ask Lisa how many we had here. But I do know some got a mail-in ballots, but that's uh, that's very, that was of interest to the cattleman, yes. So here are some brochures that we have. Uh, and here's the uh, community nutrition education program. Any other questions or comments?
Appreciate you coming today.
I do appreciate you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anything we can do as far as presenting educational, something that, training that you would like presented and you don't wanna have to, and it's a requirement, and you don't wanna have to uh, maybe pay for an outside source, consider using us. You know, we've got that little room over there, and we can stand up and give the curriculum, whatever it is, for y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Karen. There'd be no action taken on that. So I think we've done eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Moving on to item number fourteen, will be discussed, consider signing October's monthly report for Treasurer's Office and Election Board. I'll make my motion.
Mary.
Yes.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
Yes. Item number fifteen will be discussed, consider signing a resolution to dispose of equipment for Assessor's Office. It's just gonna be in our sale, he's got on there, transferred properties, District One County Committee, okay, so. So anyway, it's all it is, a Dell, OptiPlex computer and monitoring keyboard, and it is going to be transferred to another part of the county.
Yeah, I thought you talked to Tony about.
Yeah, the District One, so, I have no problem, I'll make a motion on that.
I'll say.
Paul Story.
Yes.
Parton Berry.
Yes.
Sandra Zachary.
Yes.
Item number sixteen, assigned appropriation transfers, appropriation tax receiving POs. How are you doing?
I'm fine, how are you this morning?
I'm doing good, are you? Drew Evanson?
I'm Drew Evanson.
That's what I thought, I thought I reckoned, well, hey Drew, we, we just slipped back to new business to get up and visit with us, you're on camera.
All right, I may have visited with you at the ACCO meeting.
Yes.
Wow, thanks.
I, I didn't visit with you, but I heard your speech, and I, and I appreciate what you said about the gross production tax, and I'm not gonna get in, I could speak an hour on it, but I'm not going to, but I do, I do agree with you one hundred percent.
Well, thank you, I, I, I've already interrupted your meeting, I won't do any longer than this.
No, go ahead, we're just saying, come up here and visit with us.
Just wanted to run through the courthouse, uh, outrunner for governor. Drew Evanson.
Parton Berry.
Good to see you, Carter. Told me to pass those out with Linda's picture showing and not mine, I think it was a really good idea, how are you?
Well, thank you.
I, I do think we oughta put gross production tax back at seven percent where it used to be. And I also wanna stop from stealing money from the Department of Transportation every year, try to plug up budget holes, cause it.
Well, I've asked them when the bleeding was gonna stop there.
Well, not yet, they haven't got that fixed yet, but uh, we, we can hope, how are you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as I mentioned at the ACCO meeting, I spent ten years sitting in on every county commissioner meeting in Muskogee County. Uh, as long as I was in town, I was in that meeting Monday morning. And I, I appreciate county government and what you do, and we need to stop stealing money from elected to your work. And if there's any way I can be of help, either in the campaign or as governor, I hope you'll just let me know.
Well, when you get to be governor, I just hope you do that seven percent, you know, take it back to a fair tax, not overtax it, but it was a fair tax.
Fair is fair.
Fair is fair.
Yes, sir.
And I hope when you get elected, we do that.
Planning on it, and if I can't get the legislature to do it, my commitment is to get it on the ballot, I'll, and let the people vote on it.
Couldn't agree with you more.
All right, y'all have a good meeting, appreciate you.
Thanks for coming by.
Taking a quick break, listen to, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick wouldn't his, was it his father, grandfather, his governor, wouldn't he?
Father, I think.
I think it was his father.
It is.
Dad was his father, wasn't it?
I don't know if it was his father or his uncle. I don't know. I think.
It was his grandfather.
I don't.
I don't know. He was king to him.
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
We don't have that on the agenda. I can do that. Sorry about scratching off. That typically on the agenda. We can't wipe it out down there.
Can you just, the name's what?
Yeah.
You don't wipe it out for us to use it?
Well, we can't just leave it like it is. I don't. Yeah, I'm not signing that.
I thought that was coming on next week.
It's usually on the agenda. No, I, I said it's usually on the agenda to sign that. And I don't care to explain myself on camera, but, well, I'm not signing it. But I just, I just can't go for it.
Did I have to pay them in jail yet?
So I couldn't.
Is that the payment on the jail yet?
Yeah, that is correct. I'm not, I'm not signed to make excess payment on the jail anymore. If anybody wants to know why, it's because we've been advised that we will be dead broke and we'll be writing hot checks next year if we continue to do that. And I, I think this board of county commissioners knew that two or three years ago when they were, that we were headed here. But according to our accountant and our, the guy sets our budget. We, he told us that we would be writing non payable checks next year if we keep that up. And I don't feel like we oughta break the courthouse along with the jail. At least we will have courthouse. I'm getting Thanksgiving Santa.
Yep.
I'm gonna tell you I spent too much time on Christmas.
Don't worry.
Well, I hope Marvire's caught back up today.
She's back, back in business. Tell her to do modeling. Go back to burning the rest and lot time.
Seventeen hundred dollar warranty fee normal for the jail.
Yeah, that's with the sewer in there.
Yeah, it's, it rises.
Trash.
It, if you get fifteen hundred, that's a little higher than normal, but.
I don't mind having any.
Well, it is, it is about two hundred dollars higher than normal. Like good old core wash out there, something going on. I don't know.
It's six time in a good, as I said, it's about to work, yeah?
No, I, I didn't. I had.
That's, that's pretty close to normal. I'm not sure.
Sam.
Hello, Bobby Martin.
Bobby Martin. Is that lunch for everybody today?
No. Who's the woman over there spinning that off so bad? They won't let her be courthouse. Got that off so good.
You talking about that camera, Claire?
Yeah. I'm trying to get a DD two fourteen. One girl in there taking care of the whole thing by herself.
That shows you how hard they work.
I'm gonna run against her next time she runs.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I'm gonna run against you too. I'm gonna get two picked.
I'm gonna run against you and try to get your job.
Huh?
I might run against you and try to get your job.
I don't pay them nothing.
Oh, yeah? Come on down there and run.
I might do it. I'm gonna go boy from Oklahoma City take care of somebody down here. I gave him a picture of him put on his desk. What? What's funny? You better be glad I there keep him off you big boy, what you better be glad of. Clark, you didn't spell his name.
The what?
Nothing. Carrie Low being heavy self. Did you man put on any of this or anything, any of my knowledge or anything like?
I think we're good.
What?
I think we're good.
If you get in front of the camera, Bobby, you could really talk in the public.
I hope my, I hope my face don't die. I owe enough people to this. Hell, I'm gonna go back over and try to help that poor girl out over at the office. You're welcome. You may have an opponent now. It could be me. You better watch it. Everybody have a good day.
Bye, bye.
Y'all take care.
That's a good question. I didn't go to West Clark, 'cause I didn't go to. Yeah, I know it's West Clark's. I don't know if he took it out of my account or not, but I mean, I ain't always. Clark is gonna tell you I catch up with you on that over here pretty good. It's that, we just gotta be low to rob. It's no big deal. Just, I don't go.
Oh, they think?
Yeah, I don't go to Fort Smith to get robbed. So I know it's not mine. It's kinda, yeah, but it's. I mean, it's no big deal. Stick it out, please. Thank you. Let's do that side too.
I usually pick those up and I probably dismissed it.
It's no big deal. Yes, it's no big deal. I just wonder when we get the air on those stairs, if you cut that air coming from the basement there, that's gonna put more pressure on the ground to burn out.
I'll make a motion on item sixteen.
Now we're second.
Second. Paul Story?
Yes. Now we need a motion on item number seventeen. Motion, motion, Clark, second for Sandra.
Part three?
Yes.
Same as I said? Yeah, Paul Story.
Yes.